Six o'clock and I'll call a meeting tour. Start of the prayer. Heavenly Father, we just pause this for a moment just to thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us and your creation and everything, the flowers, the grass is growing, and we're just thankful for that. We just pray for this group around this table to make decisions, let's ask for a village, guide us and direct us, and our prayers do rise.
A bunch of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please, I want to welcome everybody.
Mark?
Here.
Beverly? Here. Flupper?
Here.
Bassett?
Here.
Beverly?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Just township trustee.
Yeah.
Okay, just planned that off.
I'm happy I said first.
Okay. Okay, had before you the May first regular council meeting minutes. Any additions, corrections? Make motion to approve as written. Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Beverly?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Flupper?
Here.
Sure.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Approval bills? Any questions?
Got a question. Corey on the fire and excavating. Seat down, is that the final draw?
All right. That, that total brings it to seven hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars. He is one point two.
So what he has left is clean up and shape up and everything looks like it's installed by throw out there today and then looks like it's in bad driver's court where they're supposed to go.
I mean, they still got some pipe digging stuff to do, yes.
Oh, okay, okay. Call well tanks, one hundred and twenty-nine. Are there any round numbers? What's that for?
For the work that's been done so far out there.
Didn't we already have a draw on that or something?
Yeah, that one twenty-nine brings us to five hundred and four thousand, three hundred and sixty-two, and their portion is one point five.
But we're paying if work is completed, right?
Well, we don't, yeah, we pay like installments. As they send it to us, they're the payouts, yeah. You pay a percentage and that goes all based off the, the work that they go.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Is the, the snowblowers for what piece of wood?
Skid steer.
It goes on skid steer.
Yeah, the, the original one was like twenty grand. And then they found out that wouldn't been, it wouldn't have gotten like August of twenty twenty-four. This is the one from Redline for about seven thousand dollars less.
Not shoes are right direct in the back or trucks, right?
Yes. Yep, that comes out of that, I think, forty-nine oh four account. They done haul sleds, two different companies haul sleds.
I am booking us the very last bit.
Have you, or anybody talked to that place up there but the house?
Yes, I don't think so.
One?
I'm not thinking.
Invite her first.
Yeah, sounds one in first place in the phone.
Okay, any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to accept.
Make motion, pay bills, accept it.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Mark?
Thank.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Good.
Beverly? Yes. Flupper?
Stan.
Martin?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is notice of public hearing. There's one already listed. They'll make June the seventh at four P M. in the zoning office to hear an application for a conventional use permit at seven twenty-one North Main. And you got one on your desk. This one will be on June first, starting at six at the zoning inspector's office. Application submitted by D B M Reynolds is a request to rezone lot fifty-five, physical address three thirteen North Main, from agriculture to rezone our four single family, two family, multi, multiple family. So that's coming up.
Where is that, Ron?
That's the lot, it's the one we sold.
Oh, okay. On the corner of the road.
Yep.
Okay, wonderful.
So that, those are meetings coming up, boards and commissions. I don't have any minutes from any board or commissions. Council committee reports, personnel met March third. Is that, that when you met? Must've been May third, right?
Oops. May third, yes.
Oh.
I got it wrong on May two. May first.
Yep.
Not March first.
Yep. So...
Is there anything you can tell us about that meeting or if you know, nothing?
Any questions on those minutes? Any questions for the committee? Okay. Administrators report.
Other than what I've got here, I've got a couple things here to add. First and foremost, I had a resident talk to me the other day about the parking location out here, the three spots that we took away. Was upset that we had some, I'm not sure which group is the soap deliverer that they use the garage out here for, but truck was parked in front of City Hall and not in that spot. And that resident was upset that that truck was not using that unloading zone. Would like to see, which we don't have a sidewalk committee anymore.
We do.
We do have a three light property.
Three light property sidewalks.
Wanted me to reiterate the streetlight committee does a terrible job with sidewalks. They need to walk them, they need to check these sidewalks out, they need to be informed of them. Everything from trip hazards to people putting grass on their sidewalks. She had used an example, she had just bought a brand new pair of shoes, she had to walk across the sidewalk that had cut grass on them, she was extremely upset. Our crosswalks that we paint are pathetic. We need better paint. Our paint doesn't last. I did explain to her that is really the best paint that we can get from Sherwin-Williams to use on our sprayer. I mean, that is, we can't get the stuff to state hazard even a tire truck. We don't have, we have a walk behind. She wants to see stop bars on all of our intersections on our side streets, which I don't think we've ever put stop bars, we just paint crosswalks. Would like to see a crosswalk painted there at the Marathon on eighteen. Eric Fanning is saying that, you know, we don't have to have one there, but they insist on having a crosswalk there. I don't have an issue painting a crosswalk there. So we'll end up painting that yet this spring when we go out to paint.
Where is it gonna be?
There at Marathon where it goes to the old Guilford House there, crossing eighteen.
Running with, with Hyde.
Yes.
You guys are gonna make one coming over like to my house or to my neighbor's house?
There's no, there's a curb ramp or anything there on that side, never would. Someone ended up putting one across there. You want one?
No, I mean, everybody uses my driveway, they run to Guilford side and then they cross into my driveway. Which is not a problem, I just...
Isn't that one a bunnel? That would run parallel to bunnel?
No. Your only cross from High Street, Rob, make out is the one at Columbus.
Most people, if they're, if they're coming from town, they come down, they cross someplace and get on the other side and stay for need because of the sidewalks and stuff on first block.
That's terrible.
It's just one of the three hours, you gotta cross that, they get on the other side and then they will go up and easily cross back over to my house. But I don't have a problem, but I would have a problem to put a crosswalk there because it'd lead right into my driveway. It'd give me libel for making my happen. Carry on.
And the president did want to reiterate, she was not complaining, she was just concerned. Either not complaining, she was just concerned.
I didn't hear you say a thing that she said is not right.
So... Sounds like there's a lot of valid points. Several of those sound like zoning issues. We have ordinances against a handful of those things.
The majority of everything you said is zoning. Even very down to the sidewalks, that's not the sidewalk.
Correct, it's on the, on the sidewalks, not any sidewalks on us, so zoning is not on that committee.
Correct.
Yeah. I mean, there's definitely a lot more people out for valid sidewalks. Obviously, our zoning administrator has had his, he's been out patrolling pretty heavily on the grass.
The thing that people have to realize is it doesn't happen overnight. Doesn't happen overnight. Other than that, I just want to let people know on the twenty-fourth to twenty-fifth overnights, the Wednesday night and Thursday night, we're doing hydrant flushing. So in the mornings, if they get up and there's some orangey looking water, not to be alarmed, it's just the guys off the night before flushing the hydrants. And then just also want to let people know that they get onto the Village of Hicksville's website, there is a live feed going for a camera for the demo work down at the pool there in the park. Other than that, that's all I got.
So you guys are gonna go ahead and paint crosswalk there at Marathon?
Yeah, we can throw one down. You know, just gotta figure out a big time of day to do it.
Yeah.
Can you move it, being that it's on its paper? Very good question. That is controlled by the state, that's another village. Cause it pumps up to the state route, and that is a state route.
Right.
Both, both roads are state.
Both are. But we've, we've done, and you can't would know this, we've, we've painted...
Yeah, we've done.
On their microphone, I don't know.
You can paint wherever. The only thing O-Dot has said for years, if a sidewalk's not meeting a sidewalk, it does not get a crosswalk.
Right.
Cause they've always wanted one down near the Catholic Church across.
Correct.
It's gotta be a sidewalk matching a sidewalk.
And that don't count, huh?
And it doesn't, they're a marathon.
So...
It isn't? No. Cause they're parking lot. And I, I've told people for years, how's that making things safer being in a crosswalk? Cause you have people fly up to the middle of the crosswalks. Anyway, we're doing a crosswalk.
Did they have to, did Marathon, obviously before my time, but did Marathon have to have a, a ring through anything to stop pump that close to the road?
You know, back in the seventies, there was a pump there when...
There, there, I, I'm the one that redid slatters twenty-five years ago or so. Everything up there is one hundred percent legal through state. The pumps were existing, that's why the Marathon sign is out by the road, right out by the road. It was existing. It says whatever you do, don't touch that sign, I'll never be able to put it back up in that post.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it is a, it is a safe or unsafe condition.
Everything was existing and so you can't change it.
Did that get, once again, this is before my time, but the safe across the school, was that whole intersection evaluated?
Hmm, yeah? Yeah. They looked every route that we went through school, whatever side street. That's where they wanted the flashing electric lights and stuff, didn't they with the cross? No, they wanted...
Down by, down by Columbus.
Yeah, they wanted it farther down. Okay. But I thought they wanted something, something special for that intersection. That defines that, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly not a safe area for pedestrians, especially if kids go to school. We have a lot of heavy traffic and never get returned.
Things that you get in Camry and Camry must be the one twenty-seven closures is causing it from some Camry.
Okay, any other questions for the administrator?
What is the status on the pool design, pool budget? Does that, I guess, how far away from presenting something to the public?
I'm hoping that, I'm hoping tomorrow they'll have something in our meeting we can get rolling with, but the three five is a good number.
But what about, like, residences and such?
I, I have some down at the office, and we've had for a while.
Finance committee didn't need, for this, but we're kinda waiting for more numbers. I didn't really say a full lot, but we, finance committee met, we talked about EMS levy and we also talked about pool numbers and when they were gonna come out, just been waiting until we got, had this next meeting, so. I've always shared the renderings with you and the budgetary numbers and she talked to Cheryl on financing and she's waiting on work back to the bank on what her term would be, what a rate would be, and what a monthly payment would be, so. Definitely don't want to be the ones saying we're dragging our feet on trying to keep things moving forward.
Possibly putting, if they're really nice renderings, put them someplace that the public can see them, they might help. The donations will be good. If they can see exactly what they're getting. Maybe not. Why don't they go to website? Now, everybody's high tech, is y'all. Set up someplace. His office in a library or anywhere.
How large rendering at the site would be something to consider, something to finalize?
Sure. Someplace where the junk you probably can see. But hey, that's a nice, I should, I should, you know, if I can only give every buck, if it's too many bucks, you know, enough time, it all adds up.
I think that's on Facebook, the foundation share, they're a hundred and six thousand dollars shy of the hundred thousand dollar goal.
That's pretty much it.
All right. Any other questions, concerns? Okay.
Oh.
I forgot, the revolving loan, the committee met on eight eleven, we have the minutes, that'll come back from Troy, we have the loan, that right? So just FYI. Solicitor's report, I guess that's me. Second reading ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eleven by caption, caption only to levy tax for fire protection in the Village of Hicksville. This is the second reading, that was tabled the last meeting, right, Ken? So again, second reading. If I have the numbers in three weeks.
Otherwise, we'll table it again.
Okay.
So... No, we're gonna get a second reading done, with so many changes on the second.
Yeah, we've got three weeks till we bring it up again. First reading resolution twenty twenty-three oh six by caption only authorizing city village administrator to apply for a nature work grant and declaring emergency. What's this one for?
Uh, this is some money to go towards the volleyball court relocations. Any relocation of, of emergency, whether it's iron in the park, style like this one back here, and then fencing for the tennis court.
Lewis, excuse us, that rules, second. I'll second that.
Roll call.
Mark?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Flupper?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Beverly?
Sure.
Okay, third, second, third reading, resolution twenty twenty-three oh six by caption only authorizing village administrator to apply for a nature work grant and declaring, well, we already did it. Second.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Flupper?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Beverly?
Sure.
Mathis?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
First reading resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh seven by caption only to request reimbursement from OPW C for the South Water Tower project and declare an emergency.
On this one, it's a, a grant slash loan that they've already been approved for, but they have a new system where when you want it, you reverse for it, you have to do a resolution.
Lewis, second.
How about the second? Roll call.
Beverly? Mark?
Yes.
Flupper?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Second, third reading of resolution twenty twenty-three oh seven by caption only to request reimbursement from OPW C for the South Water Tower project.
Roll, roll, roll now. Just one correct, that should be north. You're not doing anything to the library water tower, right?
No, North Water.
South shouldn't be in there.
So it should call one of the...
Well, that's what the one in the park is, is one of those. So I guess we got the meme right.
Okay.
Otherwise, I don't care.
No.
Well, no, it's up to you guys on that, it's just not south.
South of it.
I was gonna say, it's not in the resolution. No, it says south.
Says south, and then section one says south.
And then it, it does say that.
So... Says replacement, so maybe they're replacing the south one.
All right. So... Second, roll call.
Who can answer?
Aaron, you first.
Mark?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Flupper?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Okay, I think that's it, hope we got the pass tonight. Open heads, please chief.
Well, I know I don't see court here, so I'm assuming litigation without him here, more than executive session.
You can go into it and you tell us what's going on and we can tell you whether we can answer it or not.
All right. I'm assuming it's gonna come down to his, but, so, loading zone on South Main that we just put in, uh, you know, we have, uh, my understanding when that loading zone went in is that the businesses that were using that this street to unload or load was going to use that loading zone.
Believe you, Tim, this is a subway, this truck.
White for anybody, they jimmy the car out there.
Can you tell us, my truck, where to park?
Absolutely. They were telling me, let's get my truck on or off the road.
Yep.
So does that mean that anywhere on High Street has to use that?
There's no loading zone there.
I understand that, I guess that's not, I'm just asking, how does that work?
We wanted to create a loading zone on that street so they could probably do what they want to do for right now. The purpose of us putting that loading zone in was the purpose of businesses that unload on that street is use that loading zone.
Keep semis off, out of the lanes and...
Yes, it wasn't just for one business. It was for two businesses I know of for sure. So I know most of the big deliveries are in the early A.M. when there's no cars uptown along High Street and they're parked along the curb line delivering. Those are usually delivering about seven A.M., six thirty, seven A.M. The big semis. Only other ones that you might see uptown is like a FedEx, UPS, or something along that line, is if they're parked out the street. So I just want to clarify that it's...
What do we have to do to make that illegal? Do we have to declare something, try to resolve it?
I guess that's a choice, I guess that would be choice. If we had to pass a resolution, if that's what it's gonna be for.
And I thought when the village declared a spot, a loading zone or a parking spot, that it was just not really a law.
I, I always just thought the main reason was if somebody came in here in the middle of the, early morning hours and they parked in front of, let's just say the pharmacy, I know it's not, but the pharmacy, and they had a big delivery and they parked along the curb, took up mobile spots, they unloaded, it's not really causing any problems, they could park close to business, I didn't see an issue with that personally.
I didn't see an issue with that.
But, but they show up at noon and there's nowhere to park along the curb.
Yeah, big truck, yes.
And they can't stop right on, you know, the main highway, you know, on these high streets, so they're like, we're starting to park and the closest place for them to park to deliver is in that area. And the whole idea for me was eliminate those three parking spots and make that a loading, unloading zone, where they could get off the road.
Right, cause we...
Go to Subway or go...
We did it purposely for a safety issue because of how close we're parking to the intersection and cars not, you know, getting a blind spot or a school bus on it, but, so that was the whole idea of being on that line.
I'm not saying that every semi has to park in that loading zone if it's wide open in the middle and it's early, or, you know, anything would matter.
Well, I walked up the street the other day and there was a semi, uh, he was, he came this way, tractor was pointed towards Guilford's. He was sitting there at the corner, unloading, going into a corner building on this side of the street, uh, and there was a woman sitting in a brand new black Chevy pickup truck, she was about center of his trailer, parked up against, you know, that building. And she, as I walked by, she looked at me and was, and I went, you know. And, and then I heard via the grapevine that possibly that particular business says that his trucks can park anywhere. Or deliver, doesn't have to go through the other spot. And, and I thought they did.
I'd say if they're parked on the road, they shouldn't be.
No. Especially when you park people in, you know.
I guess my assumption was that it hasn't been an issue on that side of the road. The issue that brought this whole thing to light was subway's delivery truck. So that avenue was created for that.
I'd see, I was seeing a safety hazard in either direction.
I, I don't know who they're delivering to, I just, I see multiple pictures of a couple semis parked there and, on the road, and, and we had a concern from a bus driver, came to me and complained about it and said something to him about the local administrator. I think, Tom, about, I don't know who they're delivering to, I was just seeing a lot of pictures on his phone and, you know, Corey sent me some pictures and I drive back and forth to park, for times I seen semis parked there, I have no idea who they're delivering to, I just see a semi parked there.
You know, you take a look at back behind here and it's, you can't get a delivery truck back there, it's impossible, but, you know, you should try to make convenience for delivery trucks, you know, put it in that, for any business, clothing, you know, any type of retail, I know a lot of restock businesses who are trying to make it convenient for them, not parking people in any time of the day for anybody. It makes sense to me that.
Yeah.
Okay. I've seen a lot of trucks parked, not just for subway, through, through the day, just for a, so. It takes time to get truckers' notice there, probably.
I guess a lot of all the businesses here have the same, like the school, we have the same three or four drivers under there every Tuesday or Thursday, and even once you get the word of mouth now to them, saying, if there's nothing in front of a business, then we can pull up to it, you're gonna have to park in the loading zone over there, that's what the building's put it for, on the ledge and park there.
Anything else, chief? Guys really don't have an answer, are we gonna allow them to park on this side of the street? Is there a timeline for somebody, like, I don't know, like... Like, the Amazon parks in the middle of a road, for instance, is, do they have a certain amount of time? There's no time limit, so you can't...
They have tires legally, just a little bit more tires.
No, there's no time limit where they can park so long.
But if you, if you were parked along this side of the building and you ran into a restaurant or whatever, picked up a pizza and you come back out and the semi just, just parked and got out of the truck, and you gotta sit there the next forty minutes till they unload, it's gonna be very happy?
Well, I'm not disagreeing or agreeing with the level of happiness, I'm just saying, are we able, if there's no timeline to stop in the middle of a road, I guess what ordinance would you be citing?
Parking in the roadway?
Parking in the roadway. Then the roadway would be parking in the roadway. Would you then have to start citing all, all the Amazon trucks that are parked, I just, seriously, legitimate question? Possibly, yeah. You would have to start enforcing it? I mean, you have to enforce it across the ward. Not just on that section of Main Street. But, but the purpose that we put this loading zone in was trucks delivering on South Main Street where they used that loading zone.
Cause then you're doing...
And my question is on this loading zone, where you're gonna make sure to use it?
Every time they run in somewhere.
But that's what I'm saying, are you going to, if they're parked in the roadway?
Somebody's making a mountain out of a mobile.
I think you got a commercial semi compared to a post office.
Yeah.
Thing that stops along the curb, it runs up to the thing and throws up my drop box and drives away, gone for two minutes, you know?
Yeah.
Compared to somebody that are for half an hour, an hour, it's a big difference.
Yeah, like I said, I'm only asking about this loading zone, like, because what I understand the purpose was everybody that delivers to these businesses that use South Main Street where they use that loading zone.
Yep.
And we've already instructed one driver to this business over here that they need to park in the loading zone. And now, and all I heard was rumors, you know, nobody has confronted me or come to me to complain, but they've come and complained to others or made comments, whether it's complaints or concerns, alright, and I'm also hearing a councilman telling that he's been told a semi to park there. I'm asking, just how do you enforce that specific portion of town?
Same way we, we enforce certain things in certain areas.
But there's a loading zone every block, so.
You can't, you can't drink alcohol at the park, but everybody, including you, are trying to get it so you can stay in the town and drink.
You have to pass ordinance, in order to get that.
That's what he's talking about. He said he wants to.
I'm asking what we should do to make it legal. And that's what I'm asking. What, what needs to be done? Because what are you citing that driver for?
I need this guy.
What I'm asking though is what ordinance are you citing that person for? Parking in the roadway. But then, if you're, if they are parking in the roadway, would you then have to apply that across every village street?
No, don't have to. You can park on your street.
You can say the hundred block of South Main.
You can park on my street.
Why are there parking signs on that, that you can't park on the one side of your street? Is that legal?
I'm saying there are not no parking signs on that side of the street.
On your side of the road. Unless you get down towards a stop sign or, or towards the.
Correct, but there are designated no parking zones, so.
So we're gonna make a designated parking zone?
For loading, unload, unloading.
You have to put a no parking sign on this side of the road to be able to cite that, is my question. We could put, we could put a sign that says no unloading or loading. Plain and simple. If that's. And then it's disclaiming a traffic control device as well it falls under. Because currently there is no traffic control device.
How much of that would be ORC and not just the village ordinance stuff? Like, can I go out?
That is the ORC.
Right, so then it, it wouldn't matter if we passed the village ordinance, because that would trump it anyways.
Park in, in the roadway.
Right, so, so you're, but it's your job to enforce ORC. So what does that say? So what, what would that tell you to do in that instance? Would it tell you to tell the person they have to?
No, I'm going by the loading zone that we put in for the purpose.
Right, 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 that's what I'm asking, is, ORC would tell you, you have to tell that person they have to use that, right? So what mountain says in the end, right?
Well, that's Troy Essex's question. Yeah, we actually need to pass an ordinance saying that all trucks delivering on South Main Street have to use the loading zone. Alright? And that's what, but that's where I'm coming from. We don't have an ordinance that says that that is a designated loading zone, so you, well, I'm. But then why didn't we do this in the first place? Because we, you know, that was the whole purpose behind that loading zone going in. And it was discussed amongst council without going to an ordinance and it was painted without an ordinance. Yeah, so now we're, but that's what I'm saying, but now we're telling a business guy that he doesn't have to follow that? We don't have an ordinance on, on the books. Well, then why would we put it in? Because that means I don't, that guy doesn't have to park in that loading zone. So, once again, the administrator and the employees of the village just went and painted it. There was no vote for council whether to paint it or not.
Sure there was.
Yes, there was, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, I'm sure.
And even in the street, even in the street committee. No, because we discussed painting the center line and reviewing. That is how it was discussed. And then that next day, it was painted.
No.
We might have been, it was actually before that.
Yeah, it was way before that.
Actually, Ed Garman was pre- uh, not Ed, uh.
Eddie Mendez.
Mendez, Ed Mendez was present when we did that and he brought three things to us and two of them that we approved, that should have been in the minutes, was, uh, the, the line that, actually at that time, we said was gonna be painted by somebody other than the village and the village was going to take care of repainting those, those spots.
Right.
That's what we agreed to.
Hundred percent correct.
I don't know, it was a committee meeting that we brought to council.
Yep.
Whether you were there or not, I'm not sure.
It didn't go to full council vote, though, unless it was a meeting I was not here at.
It went to.
It was in the, should have been in the minutes that got turned over to all council.
That girl right there is saying that it was and she knows everything.
I'll have to verify that, I guess.
Well, why verify? Are you against having that loading zone?
I'm against trying to cite people for things that aren't, one, applied unilaterally, or two, that you don't have an ordinance for. We're, we're not, we're not talking about citing, I just wanna make sure everybody's following the same rules that we set forth right here in this council chambers. Plain and simple.
We can get Troy involved and make sure we're doing right. And if we have to do that, that's what we'll do.
I, I think Troy does need to be involved in that, because it, because the next step would be warning the driver, next step would be citing.
Yes.
If they don't, but, but we don't have an ordinance on the books to cite against.
Yeah, I have my code.
Right, and that, I wanna know what that is, because that would.
But if you're going to, then you have to cite that, next step parking up here for those times, you have to apply it unilaterally.
Yeah, they don't have to do anything. Police officer doesn't have to do everything. If he's, just like a cop running down Interstate seventy-five, if he stopped everybody that was exceeding the seventy mile an hour speed limit, there wouldn't be nobody going anywhere. But you catch that guy stealing a hundred and ten. Same with this here, you catch that guy just up there, you can't even see the stoplight, but his semi trailer's sitting there. We don't want to do that. I wouldn't have went to the trouble to put him a designated spot and make it safe for everybody on the corner. Why you're against it, I have no idea now.
So anyway, we'll move on from that. Get Troy involved and whoever we need to do, okay? Yeah. Anything else, chief?
I recommend that we, Andrew Fritsch has completed his six months probation, that we remove him from the probation status.
I'll recommend Mr. Fritsch, is that his H?
Fritsch.
Fritsch. Take him off the probation area.
And then, Samantha Weidner, I'll second that, oops, I'm sorry, I'm the door today.
Okay, got a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Mark?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Fletcher?
Yes.
Edley?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, chief.
Uh, Officer Samantha Weidner, her last day will be June first, she is returning back home to the southern part of Ohio where she started.
So you're down two. Down to three, leaving first two, okay?
And I do have two applications on my list. Okay, that's all I got, unless anybody's got questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, fire or EMS? Before you speak, I gotta, um, Bruce has been interim fire chief the last one month, two months. So.
Ten weeks.
Ten weeks, okay. Um, I'm gonna recommend promote him to fire chief. Uh, six months probation is the standard.
Do we need that for a guy that's been over there for thirty-eight years?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Don't matter who it is. So anyway.
I will, I will get nine, you know, that idea, wonderful thing.
I'll second it. Roll call.
Edley?
Yes.
Fletcher?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yep.
Matt?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Okay, chief, Art, you're up.
You're up, what you got?
Thank you, thank you. Uh, five oh four is done. John and I are gonna go down tomorrow morning and pick it up. They found two more items on that truck that wasn't expected. So we're gonna wait till he sends me some quotes on it and we can go with it or without it, without the change for a little while, for season and so on. It's a tanker pump, um, when the truck was built, when they put it together, they put it backwards, so it's walloped out the pump handle. So he's gotta find it and get it, he got no cost, so.
So we could have a machinist like Scott Conley make us a new handle and save a lot of money.
Or, or the valve itself.
Mm-hmm.
It's the valve itself.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I am all for saving money, really, I am. Um.
Should we go back on the manufacturer at all?
Still late for that.
Oh, yeah, they went out of business thirty years ago. They went out of business thirty years ago, right after we built that truck.
You know what we're up to now with, with the total cost that we have?
No, he was supposed to get back with me today, but I know when I go down and pick it up, he'll have one for me. And I hope he'll have that estimate too, that I can pass along to everybody. Um. Our tanker was put on dot gov and we, we told them that it was a six-speed Allison transmission. It was put on dot gov as a six-speed automatic transmission.
Six-speed Allison isn't automatic.
No, that one's, that one's a stick. It's a shifter.
Mm-hmm, but Allison only makes automatics.
Somehow or another, it got to be a six-speed, but anyway, um, right now we got a bid for eighteen thousand dollars on it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I know the question's been floating around is, where's that eighteen thousand dollars gonna go?
Sure I'm asking.
Does it come back to the general fund? Does it come back to the fire department? Does it come back to equipment? Yeah, yeah, I agree one hundred percent, Ron.
I don't know.
Hmm?
It goes into its own fund and asks it there for a year, right?
Not for a year, that's part of the audit, turn of lights on.
If it's some fund for the village.
For equipment.
I mean, if we have to, if we do have to put it back into this, you know, for this, I'm, I'm all for it too.
Are they, are they, the bid still?
Yeah.
Pretty good?
One hour and twenty minutes.
So people are still hitting it?
Yeah, yeah, as of six o'clock, it was eighteen thousand dollars, so, another two hours from there.
Could be a twenty-five thousand dollar truck.
Um, five oh three that we've used for the last three weeks, that poor girl, she gave us everything we could have out there at that barn fire. She's wore out, but we could probably refurbish it as, uh, like we're trying to do to five oh four. In which if we can get it back to ISO ratings and a pump test and everything else works out, um, put in a couple thousand dollars into her, we'll save.
What's five oh three? I, I don't know what trucks these are, when you say the numbers.
That's the Pierce, five oh three. That's our se- yeah, that's our second line pumper. Four is our main line pumper, that's twenty years old also. Um. As you see, this is, uh, four hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars for a tanker pumper. I can guarantee you, in a couple of years, it'll be a million dollars for a pumper, so.
The truck you're selling, is it the same as five oh three?
No, that's a tanker.
Yep.
That's a tanker. Um.
Is it a good truck that we could put the tank over on it?
It's got a tank in there.
Oh.
It's got a thousand gallon tank.
I don't need a big tank.
No. No, we've probably been hauling down the road. That tanker we got now is three thousand gallon. So, we had enough water on the first initial attack, so we're okay now. Guys did a nice job of okaying us. I gotta say one thing, Scott did a nice job of putting this thing together, he did.
Have you been able to, I guess as part of this ongoing levy conversation, have you been able to look at all of the equipment that? You kind of came, when you came on, you started bringing in, bringing up several equipment issues.
Mm-hmm.
Have you been able to put together, basically, this is what we need, this is what we want, this is, have you been able to put that together and put dollars?
Oh, yeah, after thirty-five years, I probably could.
I think that would be.
Dollars wise, we're looking at a bunch. I mean, like you said, that next pump will probably be a million dollars, close. So if we put forty-five or fifty thousand dollars in that second line pumper, then we'll be okay. It'll last another ten years maybe.
But with these older trucks, what's our ISO? Can we, where are we at on, what number are we right now?
We are at a five, I believe.
That's not good.
No, it's not, it's not good.
No.
That's why as soon as the pumper comes back, if it tested a thousand gallon a minute, then we're good. Right? Last time we took it down, it wasn't beating that, so we'll see what they tweak on it.
What brand is the truck?
A Spartan.
Oh, is it an International or a Freightliner or?
No. It's a Spartan, that's the name of it.
Spartan goes the back ends, they don't build the frame and stuff. I can go over and look tonight, but, but if you've got a decent truck and, and it, and it's mechanically, it's still sound and the engine's good and, and enough engine to pull the weight.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I think we'd be foolish not to put some money into it.
Right.
Retain it.
Right, and that's what we could do to five oh three, the Pierce.
Okay.
We could put some money into that and we could garner maybe ten years out of her, more, ten more years.
But because of the age of the truck, it's still gonna suffer with our ISO?
Yeah.
So the only way to fix our ISO is newer stuff?
Not really, as long as we have the.
As long as it passes high?
As long as we have the pumping power.
Hmm.
And we can flow a lot of water, that's how we get our ISO rating. That manpower, uh, ladders, um, sprinkler systems and all that sort of stuff, all goes into this big mess.
I think instead of half a million dollars, we ought to start looking at forty, fifty thousand dollar repair jobs on some of those trucks.
Yeah, I could, and what I can do is have, uh, down in Finley, have them come up and go through it, or else I take the truck down there and they can go through it and give us a thumbs up of what needs to be done.
Is five oh three, is that the one that's thirty years old?
Um, yeah, yes.
What's the typical lifespan?
Twenty.
So I don't know that we should put forty-five thousand into something that should have died ten years ago. Is that a good idea?
The thing that you, that you gotta realize is, is maybe you have a, a car, I'm just saying, maybe you have a car that's ten years old, maybe it's a car ten years old. Yeah, what time trade her off? These trucks don't go anywhere. A thirty-year-old truck might only have eight thousand, nine thousand miles on it.
Right.
And may only have seven thousand mile pumping dollars on it.
Yeah.
It may have that.
Yeah, they're, they're.
But, yeah, the frames are good, the frames are solid underneath them, and that's a big thing. Uh, tires are fairly decent, probably a couple more years, gonna have pet tires on them, because they rot away just sitting there.
But they're a hit, Bruce, I mean, you know, we're looking at, at, uh, half a million dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Or fifty, they have, the trucks still, they're good-looking trucks, I mean, even.
Yeah, they're sure well-staffed, they're good-looking trucks.
So, you know, you spend, and we don't have quarter million dollars to do this again, or half a million dollars. I mean, chief.
Well, we wouldn't have gotten that new truck if it wasn't for the grant.
Yeah, yeah, we gotta save the government for this grant.
We have no, we have no money, we, we did have, we, we started a little fund there a year ago, and then when times got tough, we spent it. Same way with the pool money, it got spent when times were tough and, and we haven't reimbursed it, because we've got some of the other projects going on. So I think we'd be very advantageous to, to us as a village to, you look into what it might cost to.
Refurbish and repair work.
Yeah.
I think that's kind of, I think we should figure out what we need.
Yes.
It sounds like five oh three needs a minimum of forty to fifty thousand dollars. What do we need to keep that stuff operational?
Right.
Versus what is the want?
It may only take, you know, maybe only take twenty-five thousand dollars to refurbish that to where we could get the gallons per minute out of it.
And you're going down there tomorrow?
Mm-hmm.
Is it such a thing that you could call down there and say, hey, if we bring that truck down, and you can do it in, you know, two birds with one stone here, take it down and let them look it over? I mean, it's not gonna be an all-day thing to look it over and go, hey, you know, we can do this, this and this, and this truck will be right up the snuff.
That would leave the.
Just a thought.
Definitely the village without a pump truck, right?
We got a pumper. Our tanker is a pumper.
Okay.
And.
I mean, if it works out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, if it works out, I mean, I don't know how busy they are to be able to run it in and take a look at it.
Well, that's, the phone call will answer that and, and that'll save two guys running to Finley again.
Right.
Because having that, and I guess, would the levy also be able to be used for equipment, Cheryl? So that would be some.
Yeah, I think we're, we're gonna be pretty close.
But that would be the question, that would help with this levy conversation, if we know that we've gotta spend hundred and fifty thousand dollars in new equipment in five years to make this department.
Half a million here and half a million there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If we know those numbers, I just think that's a whole lot different.
And that's.
Information.
And that's not a big deal to me. I'm retired, I can do this stuff. I'm not working, then I have to live in front of it to do it. So running down to Finley, it's no big deal to me, I mean.
Still man hours.
Yeah, just man hours, um, and I love popping fire trucks, so, you know? It's a, it's a good thing. Actually, I've got a plan. Yeah, and I've got a plan to, to do this, and I, you know, that was one of them at the end of the year to see how much money we have left, if we have any.
Probably not gonna be much money left.
Yeah.
And that's why I think being proactive, especially with the levy conversation going on.
And the tires on the tanker, just to let you know, they're a thousand dollars a piece. And the tires on the tanker, just to let you know, they're a thousand dollars a piece.
Why?
Because they just are. They, we looked them up in the...
You don't run the normal truck tires on those fire trucks?
No, no, we run a special tire for that thing.
Seriously?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
It's probably like a Bruce Superated type tire.
Yes.
Bird.
But we looked them up.
Something along that line.
Thousand dollars a piece.
It's like a special tire for six, eight, ten tires, yeah. They're not a whole lot different than any old natural tire.
Probably not.
Nope.
And that probably not, really.
Those are things just to keep in mind, typically the budgeting process starts in September.
Exactly, and that's what I'm gonna start doing. I'm gonna start looking five years on our...
Well, if, if you could, Bruce, I'm gonna ask you if you could do this. Kind of put together, like, like Taylor said,
Mm-hmm.
get him, get him, get his committee, get him a general idea of what you're thinking, so that they can put those, use those figures for the levy conversation.
And I'll, I'll get them soon for you too. I'll get them soon.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Got any other questions for the Chief?
I'm just trying to enlighten you what's coming down the pipe, because it's not gonna stop, really.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Bruce.
And I, I work to be conservative, I really do. I'll spend what I need to do, but I'm not gonna buy anything frivolously, just because I have the money. So you don't have to worry about that.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Yeah. Thanks, Chief. Park director, nobody, anything from here on the park board, ready? From there, no park board. Yeah, so they're not here, so things must be going okay. Um, Cheryl, this officer report?
There's someone on the park. They're always coming down. Watch it live.
Yeah.
They're always gone.
You've already got the site prepped for, for the splashback, but I changed it down in the name. Tennis court's gone, for volleyball courts.
Mr. You ever found a baseball from demo, right, that volleyball courts is the plan? As the schedule allows. Is the basketball court gonna resurface this summer?
Yes.
Yeah. We're just gonna go fix the cracks in it, re-spray it, and I think we're gonna go red lines on it.
So you're just gonna do a seal code on it, you're not gonna do an overlay?
Correct.
Right.
Like thirty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Do you know that if you budget like five grand to do that, do you have a timeline on that? I was hoping it would have been done a few weeks ago, but with the weather, anyway, that was in front of us, that's why we're doing it now. Ohio asphalt are the ones that are doing it. It's like a subset area of, yeah. I think the school's got some knowledge down there, it wasn't taken, you know, it's good. Football field.
Hey, Cheryl, you're up.
How do we have your fund status and cash summary with revenue and expenditure for the year so far? Um, the April mayor's report report and our first quarter immediate town franchise ticket report.
Any questions for Cheryl, or any other questions? Okay. Mayor's report, Hicksville Historical Society's gonna be open the first Wednesday of each month from eleven to one. I got a card from them today. It mentioned bring your lunch and go through the Hicksville history. A lot of neat stuff in there. So again, it's the first Wednesday of each month, eleven to one. Uh, our next meeting's gonna be June the fifth. Happy Memorial Day to all the citizens, gonna be here soon. Our next meeting will be after that. And congratulations to Ken and Harry. You're on the ball ballot, right, or whatever your...
It is the last round, so congratulations to you two for counseling.
Somebody wanted that for session, right? Before you...
Okay.
I apologize, there really, could you go back and read the heading for that ordinance or resolution for water tower? I think I heard wrong, so what I said might not apply.
South Water Tower replacement.
Okay, then that, then that'll work, I'm sorry.
It's a south tower.
State of Ohio wrote this, the RPWC woman wrote it, so I just took...
Yeah, that will work. Yes, it's replacing the south tower.
Okay, good.
Sorry.
That means you're listening.
No, evidently not. I almost said it wrong, but anyway.
Chief, you still on the executive?
Yeah, I can tell you what I'm thinking, alright, but I feel towards probably I have to answer these questions.
Has, has for an executive session to do...
I really have, um...
Yes, I do, I'm gonna say something, I may. First of all, thank you for your time. I'd like to say that I have a suspicion with your minister, there, he's very discourteous towards me, he will not acknowledge me. I, I've asked the things, I've been told no, I have put it on my phone of such things. I tell him to keep recycling alive, he won't tell me how to do that, so I'll, I'll take that because it's Mike Bart's to get to him. I, I don't know why I've been launched, I've said this man, I wish he would sit down and talk to him, let me know, so we can get these issues sorted out. Because this situation's not looking for me at all. I'm not gonna be treated, treated like this. The discrimination is treated like this, not, not even, so much even acknowledged. They won't call me in for nothing at the shop anymore. I was told, he, I was told, he told his employees that they're not allowed to call me. Was it true? I don't know. I won't say how it's true, it may not be. I was told by an employee that he was, I didn't know, so I didn't allow him to call me in. He doesn't want me in that shop for no reason, anywhere near him. I'm just to the point where I'm tired of being treated this way. I've been going on for so long now, and I'm through putting up with it. Something needs to be done.
Thank you.
I, I have a question.
Yes, I would, because we have...
So you said something about Mike Bart had to do something?
I know, I said I give the key to Mike Bailey to the lock, because you wouldn't even tell me how to give it to you. I have that on my phone too as well, you won't tell me how to get you the key to the building.
Key to lock on your building?
Yeah, you won't tell me how to get it to you, so I give it to Mike Bailey to give to you.
Okay.
I have it on my phone, you wouldn't even answer that question.
Maybe leave it on the desk.
I asked you if you want me to bring it up there, or if you want me to bring it up there or not. You haven't told me how to bring it to you, I asked at the lot that they're working. So I don't know whether I'm supposed to leave the lot open to you or say that, which is why I asked you what you want me to do.
And what was my response?
You didn't respond at all to it. I have it on my phone, I can show it to you, and when I show it to you, I'd not have to say it. There was no response at all to you about the key. But when I asked you about how you, if I take my trash to a service plant, you said yes. You responded to that, but you won't respond to how to get, how to get the key. There wasn't, no way you even acknowledged me at all.
I don't ever see you.
If I come in the shop, you don't acknowledge me.
I haven't seen you in the shop.
I go up there, can I check this now, and you don't even, no, wait, Buck will talk to you, I'll tell you, but you won't ask. Buck, you see him by the street, and he'll say, hey, how, how's it going?
Okay, Billy, I think you, Mr. Australia, myself, just need to sit down.
I agree with you.
Okay.
Yes, I do.
So that's what I'll recommend.
I agree with you. Maybe you sit down together and get this off straight about.
Just take care of it.
I think so too, I agree. Thank you, Ron.
Thanks, Bill.
Yep.
Okay, we have a, we have an executive session for litigation, they'll have a second. I'll second that. The Chief, Ron. Chief.
Say that, Ron.
I did. I did it.
Martin?
Yes.
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Martin?[1730.85]